Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Village Hall, whether you're joining us in person or online. A lot of folks here, we've never seen a Village Hall before. It's very exciting. Good to have the company. Most of us know each other, but for those who don't, I'm Mayor Kathleen Foley, and I'll let the trustees introduce themselves.
Trustee Starbuck.
Deputy Mary Woods.
Trustee Laura Bozzi.
Trustee Erin Frymark.
And I would like to introduce everyone to our new village clerk, Greg Hudson. Greg is assuming Jeff Vidakovic's role. Greg is highly professional, very capable, and a true pleasure to work with. I think the public's going to really enjoy working with him as well. And also joining us is Kelly Palagi, who's one of our deputy clerks. Many of you may have interacted with her around the resident parking plan.
Also enjoyed it.
And also enjoy to work with. So the primary topic for our workshop this evening is correspondence received from a number of Main Street merchants, many of you who are in the room, related to the new commuter parking on Main Street. So thank you very much for your letter and raising issues that are of concern for you. Trustee Frymark has prepared a presentation for the board and for the public. But before he starts off, I want to make a few quick remarks. The earliest reference that we have found to the village attempting to balance visitor and resident parking is in a New York Times article about visiting Cold Spring, published in 1989. So for perspective, I'm nearly 53. I was a senior in high school when then-Mayor Grupe told the Times that the village hoped to install meters, but needed to figure out a way to preserve resident parking on side streets. Clearly, this community has been talking about meters and parking for a really long time. Several committees, going back to 2008, a couple folks who were on previous committees are in the room tonight, and multiple iterations of the Board of Trustees have tried to make meters happen. There have been countless public conversations and meetings, press coverage, and social media chatter. Conversations have been robust, as are all conversations in Cold Spring, robust all along the way. That said, we know that some folks stay informed as projects roll out, while for others, change doesn't come into focus until it's happened. Ever was it thus? And change of any type is not something most humans like. It's just who we are. In public sessions leading up to the implementation of the parking plan, we as a board made several things clear. We have to balance multiple priorities and the needs of multiple stakeholders. Everyone needs to give something for us all to gain. We need to reduce traffic density and encourage arrivals to Cold Spring by public transportation. We need to encourage people to park in the municipal lot and the Metro North lot. We need to preserve resident parking and the residential character of the village. Importantly, and this is key for everyone, if you have one takeaway, it's talk to the legislature and the county executive about this. Because Putnam County does not share sales tax, we need to generate income to offset the costs of visitation. Right now, the taxpayer bears all of those costs. Parking is one stream that we can optimize. Lastly, we committed to launching the plan, observing how it works, and modifying as needed and as appropriate. And there's something else that all of the trustees at this table are really clear about, I think. We know that a healthy, thriving community needs a healthy, thriving commercial core. Today, we have a resident-relevant, visitor-viable Main Street. Most communities only wish they still had. As mayor, I'm mindful that our Main Street does not operate in a vacuum. Cold Spring businesses experience the same economic and social vagaries as every other American community. The village isn't immune to broader realities. Parking is on all of our minds right now, and that's the focus of our work tonight. But it's neither a singular nor an independent factor in our local economy. So again, launch, review, revise. We are open to good and viable ideas, and we'll consider them as we balance priorities. So I'm nearly done, except there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of process I have to go through about public comment. Here's some ground rules. You may speak on items that are on the agenda only. If you veer off course, I'll give you a gentle reminder. Please provide new comments that carry the discord forward. Avoid repeating, reiterating, and amplifying points that are already made. We want to make sure everyone who wants to speak gets a chance to. We'll be recognizing Village of Cold Spring business owners first as their correspondence is under discussion. We'll be starting with those in the room who've signed to speak, and then move to those who are online, if there are. Let's see, right now. After we've heard from the merchants wishing to speak for a period of time determined by the trustees, board will recognize others, beginning with village residents, and then others from Nelsonville and Phillips Town for a period of time, as I said, for a period of time we determined. To help with this, I'll ask for your name and address. Remarks must be limited to three minutes. We have a timer to remind you. If you can't say what you hope to say in that time, you may submit comments in writing to vcsclerk@coldspringny.gov. I want to confirm that the board has received many written comments in advance of the meeting. They have been distributed among the board. They are in the public records card of the clerk, and they'll be attached to the minutes of the session. But we're not, again, not going to read them in because we want to hear what you have to say in the room tonight. Comments must be addressed to the board as a body, not to individual trustees or to the public audience. The Village Board is not required to respond to questions or comments from the public, but may do so at the chair's discretion. That's me. We're not going to have a back end board. We want to reserve time for the trustees to discuss ideas or concerns raised by comments. Most importantly, we ask everyone to observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Any statements made during a public meeting by the trustees or by members of the public shall not involve hate speech or obscenities or threatening speech, directly or indirectly. Yelling and cursing will not be permitted. This meeting and all of our meetings is recorded. So there will be a full record of any statements made, and people should please conduct themselves accordingly. I hate to have to go through all that, but if anybody who was paying attention to last fall, we've had some pretty rough public sessions, we have all full confidence that we're going to have a a really healthy and polite conversation with you all tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Erin. Oh, Laura has an announcement, sorry. Yes. And both particularly because we have people, the audience, an announcement that if the board approves tonight, we'll begin a food scraps or composting drop-off site in the village starting next week as part of the town's program. So you can find out more at coldspringny.gov/climat to sign up. And it's a pilot program thanks to Clean Energy Communities Grant. So we have funding through December, and then we'll have to figure out how we continue it because I think it will be a success. Please look into it.
So hello, everyone. My name's Erin Frymark, and I'm a pretty new, I'm the newest trustee here on the board. And this is an exciting process for me to be part of. There's a lot of emotion around parking, a lot of thoughts around it. I think that's good. I really, we like the participation. It might not seem like it, but we actually do. And during this conversation, it occurred to me, we were talking a lot about about things, but we weren't talking a lot about data. Especially, we've collected a lot of data from the village, from the meters and the systems that we use to operate. And I wanted to, I thought it was appropriate, working with the mayor, that we present some data as part of this, right? This is not a series of recommendations or a complete history of what we're doing, but it's a way of looking at what we have done so far, really since the parking program went live in April. So I'll go through that with you. This is, you can see, a June parking update. It's my intention to repeat this and update it with further data as we go forward. This is not totally complete either. So we'd be very happy to get some feedback on this from the trustees and, you know, from the public, any of the comments about, you know, what else could be included. We're also working out the systems. There's still some things that are a little rough. So this doesn't look at parking tickets, for example, right now, although that is a goal for us to include a discussion of parking tickets in the future. Okay, mostly this is just about meters, but a little bit more. Okay, so. All right. Just a little history. By the way, it's all on the TV screen there. If you can't see it, there's some scenes on the side. I encourage you. This is about 10 slides, just to give you an idea how long it's going to be. So we're not, again, not a complete history, but the first parking committee formed in 2008. And like Mayor Foley said, this was discussed back in the 80s. And I think that mayor proposed like an $8 an hour. Just okay, let's start with, so.
Some kind of laugh in this room, by the way.
We needed, for part of this plan, we needed enabling legislation from New York State. We received that in 2015. And was that time limited? I mean, we had to, we had to implement something, but at a certain period of time, I believe, for that. And we've had, over last year, when we were doing most of the bulk of the work developing this plan, over 10 opportunities for the public to discuss the parking plan. We implemented this plan with a commitment for doing ongoing review and refinement, right? This is part of that, this process that we're all in today. We've made a lot of changes since April 1st. All right, I think, in my opinion, not necessarily shared by other people, but I think shared by a lot of people. We had some problems at the beginning, and we tried to fix them really quickly. So we gave warnings only in April, and we improved the signage. The first set of signs wasn't really complete, and we've improved that. The, we've got extra training for parking enforcement officers. And originally, the plan included Monday holidays, like Memorial Day, and we've since removed those from the plan, in part because it just made the signs too confusing, and it was not clear really, you know, when it was enforced on Mondays and when it wasn't. And we wanted to simplify that for everybody. The parking, the meters are part of an entire plan. The meters don't work on their own because if we just meter Main Street, then everybody would park just around the corner on the side streets, and then the residents end up parking. And so all from the beginning, this has been a balancing act between a couple of different constituents, residents, shoppers, but also we have other people here who, like commuters and hikers, who are probably, you know, who used to, just last year, would take up a significant number of spaces. And so part of the idea of the parking plan was to discourage some of the long-term parkers who really were just taking up space, perhaps.
It's important to note that that period was arrived at by the parking committee working with merchants, who at the time gave feedback about making sure that there was turnover. So there were new shoppers coming. Carry on.
And so, for example, the meters went to effect just after the residential parking plan and the residential parking permits, and that was not an accident. That was because we had to sort of protect some spaces and create a lot of free spaces outside of the shopping district while we were putting in, before we put in the meters here. Okay, so our inventory, we need to look at the entirety of Cold Spring, right? As part of this. There are 80 spaces on Cold Spring, three of them ADA spaces.
Main Street.
On Main Street. And then 155 residential permit spaces. But to give you an idea, we have issued 254 residential parking permits. Now, we allow people with driveways to park the driveways to get a resident parking permit. That doesn't mean they park in the street. That just means they have it in case they need it, but gives you an idea. A lot of the feedback, for those of you who might not know, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from residents that the residential parking permit is working well, and people can park in front of their house for the first time. And so that's, that's a good thing. There are 82 free spaces on side streets and then a municipal lot as well, that's on Fair Street. It's been in business for a long time. That is metered 24 hours a day. Then we have other free spaces in the winter lot, which is free all year round over by the marathon plan on Boulevard Kimball, which is just a block or two from here. And then there were, I counted them, around 200 free on the weekend spaces in the Metro North. So to help visualize this, we made a map. And you all either have a copy or you can pick one up here. This is a map which probably needs, there's some corrections, and we're happy to get it. We've been through lots of different versions. We've never really had a great map for all of the parking, at least in the middle of the village, right? From 90 down to the railroad tracks. And this attempts to put everything in perspective. So there's, there's a Monday through Thursday side, and then a Friday through Sunday side. And if this is helpful, maybe this is something that we could work with a chamber on to make lots of copies distribute, just to help people understand where they have options to park, right? I will point out, there's a lot of colors on here because it's not simple, right? There's a lot of different variations. There's, there's just on the weekend part, there's like four different variations of free, right? So there's different time limits, and we're trying to be a bit comprehensive here. But it's important to look at the entirety of it. If we just look at one section of the parking plan, then we're not seeing, you know, how interrelated the different pieces are, right? Okay, so we have those. A little bit note about some of the constraints that we are under as a municipality. Sorry? There we go. So I was a small business owner. I'm now working in the village government here as a trustee. It's really different, right? I had a lot more flexibility as a business owner. Village budgets here, and many of you know this already, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Our budget process is dictated by New York State law. We do not really have a lot of flexibility in it. The fiscal year is June 1st through May 31st. June 1st just started. We just entered our new fiscal year now. And so we are working now in the budget that we passed two months ago in March. Yeah, in March. We have to balance our budget in advance, right? This is, this is a law. We are, we are taxpayer-funded. We owe the residents here, everybody who pays taxes, a balanced budget here. And the budget is fully public. It's audited by paid auditors that we pay, and that's something that we have a requirement to do as well. And we can't just raise rates whatever we want because there's a New York State tax cap that I'm sure everybody's familiar with. What's more is that once we pass this one-year budget, we can transfer money around, but we can't increase the budget, right? So we can't just, we can't raise taxes, for example, in the middle of a budget cycle. All right. So some of the services that the revenue we collect pay for, and these, you know, this is selective, but we're trying to think of what helps Main Street here. Sidewalks and road repairs, and the staff that we hire to do the work of repairing roads and sidewalks and improving them. Free maintenance, police, fire, garbage and recycling, public bathrooms, lighting, and storm response. And the storm response has been really unexpectedly high over, especially last year. And the unexpected part is what we're trying to deal with because it's becoming more expected, that it's exceeding what we planned for. Okay? So a little bit of a look at where the revenue comes from for the village. Bunch here, you can see about 50% of it is parking, is property taxes, sorry. 50% of it is property taxes. Some, it's appropriated fund balance. Fund balance is, you know, just the amount in the bank account that's left over for previous years, right? That's just the base amount. We can use that, if designated by the budget, for one-time expenses. For example, a, you know, a singular road repair or something like that. But we have to have planned that in advance to do that. We have other revenue sources. This includes grants, this includes fees and fines, and things like that. And then the sort of new things for this year. Now, the residential parking permit and the parking meter fees. Now, we actually have this in the budget for 2023 to 2024, but the parking program didn't go live. And so we didn't actually collect money in that area for parking meter fees. So we had to cover those expenses in other ways, and it was a tough year. This year, we've put it in there, and I'll come in a second about how we came up with those figures. It works out to 8% of our general fund budget, right, of revenue. There are, there's a lot more. There's two other budgets for sewer and water, but they don't really mix, right? We collect water fees that pay for water budget. We collect sewer fees that pay for sewer budget.
And that state law, too.
Yeah. So how did we come up with $284,596 for the expected fiscal year revenue? We counted the number of spaces on Main Street, which is 80 spaces, and we estimated 70% capacity for the three days a week, actually, three days a week plus Monday. And that comes out at the $4 an hour to this number, which is $5,367, $76 a week. Now, off-peak, there's months of the year, it's pretty empty. We're assuming 35% capacity, okay? For those four months of the year, which are the winter months. But for eight months of the year, we're, we were looking at 70%. Now, this was an estimate, and it was an informed estimate. We looked at the traffic, but, you know, we had to make predictions about how things were going to go. Okay, so how are we doing with that? So we've had metering at the municipal lot on Fair Street for many years. So, and we looked at the data, what we've actually collected. It's not two full months, but it's April 1st to May 20th. That's when we got the data and started looking through it. So in that period, and this is just for relative, the municipal lot collected $7,560. Main Street was almost $29,000 at that time. So Main Street brings in a lot more revenue than the municipal lot that is so far this year in a very dramatic way. Looking at that, just Main Street from a weekly meter revenue, and you can see, these are the weekends that we looked at here. Again, in April, it was a little bit slow. People were figuring this out. We were given warnings, and so some people didn't necessarily pay, or they were just figuring out whether the weather wasn't so good. And then it starts growing a little bit. But then, and up till the last weekend that we looked at the data, and we'll repeat this, and we'll keep monitoring this. On May 17th, that weekend, it was $4,700. And you can click one time, Greg. So you remember what we met, had as the peaks and what the target was during the peak months. It's 5,300.
I began to go back. Yep, there you go.
There, just right there. Yep. So you can see those lines that were what we expected to reach, what we had budgeted and planned to reach, and we're not quite reaching that. And we're not sure about the off-peak months yet. Okay, so just to give you, again, data and a little context here about what we budgeted and what we're seeing now. So.
Oh, you can press submit.
No, next one, please. All right. So just a little bit more because we have this data. We can see who's paying on the meters, on the kiosks, and who's paying on Park Mobile, on the app. On the municipal lot, 45% of people pay on the kiosks, but on Main Street, only 16% do, and 84% on Park Mobile. So this is, we think, because there just are two kiosks on Main Street, right? It's not that people love the app and they're very different people who park in the two lots. It's just that there aren't a lot of kiosks. Now, the original parking plan had no kiosks. It was 100% app-driven. But, you know, this board added two kiosks last year as we were planning to split them in, okay? We might want to add more meters. That might be a really positive thing. Of some of the feedback that we've heard, it's not in our budget, right? It's just not in the budget for this year. And I've gone over the constraints that we have, okay? So now, now I looked at what relative days are over, what's like just the month of May, and we're not collecting the same amount every day. Saturdays, we're collecting the highest amount on average, and Sundays, it's 1,500. Saturdays, it's 1,900. Fridays, it's a lot less. And just, you haven't got to count, but just observing, Fridays still seem pretty full, but we're not collecting the revenue on Fridays. So it's, it's really only 40% of the revenue that comes in on Saturday and Sundays. We are, we are working on increased enforcement on Fridays, which will help our revenue numbers. And what's important about that from everybody's point of view, because, you know, you might not like the idea of increased enforcement, but it's a good thing if we're hitting our budget numbers because then we have more room to make changes, right? All right. So this chart, which, which I found pretty interesting, we actually get data on the license plates, right? I don't know, how many of you have actually tried the meters and put? I probably shouldn't ask her, it's not my limit, but whatever. But it's like, if you try it, and I've tried it, it's, you type in your license plate. There's no ticket for your window or anything like that. You just tell the system what your license plate is, and that goes into the parking enforcement officers that handle computers. And so the parking enforcement officer can scan your license plate and just says, yes, it's approved, or not. So because with license plate data, we can tell how often people are returning. And so we looked, and 90% of vehicles that have parked here from April to May 20th have parked here only once. The 10% who've parked here more than once, the great majority of that have only done it two times. So, and this is obviously something that will probably, probably change, you know, as we have a longer time period. I would expect more repeat parkers. But, but this is the number that is, that we're seeing in the data here, okay? So last slide, we did want to record some of the ideas to consider and some of the challenges that we're facing. One option to consider, and this is as a village, to further publicize pre-parking options, and that's one of the goals of the map, right? To increase Friday enforcement, which could help lead to more revenue and more wiggle room with some of our constraints. Because to do some things with lower revenue expectations, and that is not, that's hard to do with a balanced budget. We can decrease the minimum time, which is now one hour, right? You have to, the shortest amount of time you can pay is one hour. The next level is two hours, right? We could go to a smaller increment, like half an hour. That probably, it's likely to lead to more revenue because there'd be more turnover of cars if people stay for smaller increments of time and pay for that. And that might end up being better for locals who want to pick up something quick and then go, who really feel challenged by the parking today. We can also increase the maximum time for three hours to four hours. I know many of the comments from the audience really related to this item. That's certainly better for full-day shoppers. However, there's a downside, a potential downside to that. So, you know, the big challenge here, the number one thing, is that we're struggling to meet the estimates in our own budget. And so any change that might reduce revenue would end up requiring cuts to other budget lines. You can't make that up in another way. And removing the parking limits would reduce turnover, which is a good thing for certain constituents and a challenge for other ones. And it's just something to keep in mind.
So we'll first have discussion among trustees. Trustees have questions for Erin or comments? That I'm contemplating a comment or no?
I'm contemplating a comment. I mean, I think this is really helpful. Erin, I think it does a good job for, for all of us to understand what our budget looks like and not see things in a vacuum from just your one perspective, but kind of the bigger picture of what we're dealing with. You know, there are challenges. It definitely wasn't the easiest start. But with anything new, that's, especially when there's technology involved and enforcement, it's going to be some, some learning curves. And we, I think we've met a lot of those curves, and there's obviously many things that we can do to, to make this plan work well for all of us. Excuse me, I don't know why my voice is cracking.
Emotional.
I guess, I'm really. I think, you know, I will be interested to hear what people have to say. And obviously, we've, we've read your letters and stuff. I hope that, you know, in light of this information that you've just received, that again, like, we sort of take a bit more of a holistic approach and understanding to what's going on here so that we can come up with solutions that work for the village as a whole. So I'm looking forward to that.
Comments or questions before we go to public comment?
I appreciate the presentation, too.
Um, I appreciate the presentation too. I know how much work goes, goes into making that and pulling all of that, I appreciate that. Um, I think that, you know, contemplating the idea of changing the hour limit is a good one. Um, it was something that the Parking Committee tossed out there to make it limited to three hours, and it was, um, with the hopes that it would benefit everybody. But I think, um, you know, as I've read comments and talked to different merchants, I think it benefits some, but not everybody, and it harms others. So finding the balance where we can, like, not harm the village budget, but also support all the different types of businesses is really important for us to consider, and, and if we can make that, like, make an improvement that will support um, more needs in that way, I would be open to it. Um, and mostly, I just wanna hear what people would say.
Questions for me? Um, well, I, um, I appreciate the engagement and, um, read some really thoughtful letters, um, about, um, I think providing kind of data from the merchant side, and, and so, and so reason, thank you for that. That's really helpful for us. Um, and, and I, like, echo the perspective that we've, and we're all residents here too. We really value our vibe with Main Street, and it's why a lot of us live here, we care about that. Um, and we also went through a really tough budget, like, balancing our budget series really hard. Um, and, uh, we just wrapped that, that up, and so I think for me, some of the harder questions here are, of course, the ones that would, we'd have to figure out what that budget looks like, and, and I, um, there's no, I don't, I, you know, I agree that, you know, there's been what the discussion, but it is very, it's very bare bones. Um, uh, and then, and then I'm all for ways that the small, the, the like, kind of easy wins that we can make of changing the number of hours. I would love to see like a fifteen, forget thirty minutes, but like fifteen-minute increments. I'm used to that in other cities. I don't, that, I think ways that, that we know that the technology can work with us, and it's something that everybody wants to see. I think, you know, we could move ahead with those, um, soon. There are challenges with the technology. So like, one of the reasons that we took Monday off was because every Sunday of a holiday weekend, a staff person would have to go out and like manually change the kiosk or something like that. Like, the, the, um, we wish that it was a more dynamic technology, and it's not. So some of the answers are not because we don't wanna do it, but it's because of the technology. Um, uh, then, and, and yes, happy to hear, um, comment.
The, the, the only thing I'd like to add here, um, is I, I was really struck and impressed by the letters that we received and the communication and the paper about how respectful the tone was from all the merchants. And, and I think that's great. We get a lot of correspondence, and surprisingly, not all of it is polite. Um, but, but this was, this was really great. So, uh, you know, we really do wanna speak for myself, and I think everybody here. We wanna, we wanna work in partnership, so, uh, so thank you very much for being respectful.
Um, so, I'm with Laura. Um, I think the things we can do that are, that are easy fixes, that check a lot of boxes, we can do. Makes the, the shorter amounts of time make sense to me, meaning increments, um, and the longer hours. I'm not sure how it's gonna work. We try it, see how it goes, and if it's, if we're having a problem on the other end of people parking all day, we'll have to look at it again. Some of this is trial and error. Um, and I also wanna point out something that's, that's really important, that we're not maybe necessarily thinking about right now, is for how many years people have complained about enforcement on Main Street. And we are very clear with our police officers and our parking enforcement officers, that they need to be consistent and fair, and they need to enforce our parking rules, so people can take them. So there's, there's a balance of everything. Um, rules, rules have, rules have to be followed by everybody, um, and, and apply to all of us. So we've answered the call for enforcement by making it happen. Um, so if there's no other exchange by the board, um, I'd like to make a motion to open public comment. If I may have to sign it, is there anybody who wants to speak who didn't get to sign in? And if you're online, we're gonna, if you, you're online and you've joined us after, we're gonna start with folks in the room, with merchants in the room, then go to merchants online, and then come back to other members of the audience, residents in Cold Spring first, um, and then surrounding communities after. Um, so Grace is the first who's signed up, Grace Lowe, fifty-seven Main Street, and speaking as a merchant and resident.
Yes.
We would, uh, you're welcome to come up to the podium if you feel comfortable, you don't have to.
Okay, sure, um, hi, um, my name's Grace Lowe. I think I know everyone on the board at this point. Um, I own a shop off the street, and I live down the street on Main Street. So I'm on Main Street almost all the time. Um, as of two months ago, I am one of the co-chairs of the Main Street Committee, which is under the umbrella of the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce. Um, and I've spent a lot of time talking to people about parking in the last two months. Um, so what I thought I would try to do with my time is to give that, give one idea of what this store looks like and why we have so many merchants who are really concerned about what's going on with the parking right now. Um, the, we have thirty-six merchants who signed on to that letter, that sort of had these four recommendations for what we'd like to see changed to the parking. Um, and the, I think most of us are gonna talk about the main two that you guys have talked about as well, which is basically, um, well, part of it is the parking limit, and the other part that we really wanna talk about is the hourly rate as well. Um, so I think there's, there's a little bit of this, like, concept misconception in the village, and I think maybe in retail at large, that like, a lot of businesses are like rolling in money at the end of the year, right? And I think giving out someone like a very, giving everyone like a very typical, very, very typical, sort of generic look at like a retail monthly budget, half your money, not a little bit more, it just goes out to like things at stock your shop, right? The rest of the money goes to rent, it goes to utilities, it goes to employees, it goes to all these things that have, need to happen before you even open the door, right? Um, and in, in all retail businesses, like the net profit per year is something between like one percent and nine percent. Um, so when we were talking about, in the slider, we sort of talked about, okay, generally across the board, people are seeing a twenty to twenty-five percent loss in revenue, that's a pretty big hit, right? That's like people are going into their savings, that is people who are counting on April and May to sort of give them a little bump in sales, and not seeing that at all, right? Um, I think you'll hear from a lot of merchants who've been around for a little while, right? Like, there are a lot of things that happen. People talk about how business was like last week, last week, last month, whatever. Kind of like talking about the weather a little bit, but it's also a little, there's like a, there's a really long view to this, that's sort of like, okay, so, for example, my business has been in, in business for five years. We've been in the same spot for three years, so like, that's a pretty good baseline of like, okay, three years, same spot. Um, and we do really well. We have a lot of locals, we have a lot of people who come visit us from afar. Um, we have really local loyal customers. We should, we have a pretty consistent rate of growth from year to year. We've had like two blips in the last three years. Um, one of them had to do about six, six Saturdays of rain last summer. Um, so like, we were flat, right? So when things are a bit for us, it's kind of, but it's the same as the year before. Um, we were flat in April, and May, we were down twenty, twenty, fifteen percent, um, for which, which is kind of big for us, because that generally doesn't happen, and like, because we generally see growth, it's more like a thirty, thirty-five percent down for us. Um, so like, in this, in this realm of like, how little profit gets made from month to month, a lot of us agree, because we love being part of this town, right? We love being part of the community, we love having your kids come in the shop. We love having people update us on what's happening with, with, with their families and things like that. Um, the, so when we're at this point in April and May, and we're not seeing a bump in sales, and we're looking at this sort of continuing for this rest of this busy season, it's kind of, it's a little terrifying. Um, and I think this idea of that continuing into this, like, what we think is pushing down sales, continuing into the not-so-bid, the not-busy season, like where basically falls out of the cliff, that's, that's like, I don't know, it's, I think no one feels very good about that. Um, so the two things that we're sort of talking about is changing the hourly rate. Um, and I know we're sort of looking at this holistically in terms of like, valid, make sure the budget is.
Thirty seconds left, reminder on three minutes.
Sweet. Um.
Reminded you when you started, sorry.
No, it's okay, I, is it okay if I extend mine for a minute, just because I'm talking about, on behalf of?
I, I will give you that courtesy, because I did not remind you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, so what we're sort of seeing in terms of, so you're looking at how many people are coming back, right? Like, how many people paid once. So looking at Main Street, sort of, from a merchant perspective, but also someone who walks up and down the street. Like, the thing that is different now is that on, if, if I'm walking up to my shop, um, on a Saturday and Sunday, and it is, the street is full at ten AM, I know it's gonna be a busy day, right? The thing that's happening now is that there are less cars in the street up until one-ish, right? And it's filled, filled, and then people are clearing out earlier. Um, so Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays are generally where everyone's making, trying to make their money for the week, right? Um, and we're seeing really, really much, many, many less people coming in, and we're seeing really empty streets for some hours, but we think are because locals aren't coming to the town, um, because they're deterred by the parking rate. Um, so the half-hour increment, increments were something that we would really like to see. Um, and then the, the four dollars as, um, we're not seeing, in the general area, we're not seeing four dollars anywhere else except for maybe Midtown Manhattan. And I think in Midtown Manhattan, four dollars is meant to be like a little bit deterrent, right? It's meant to be like, you should think about, twice about bringing your car here. Um, this four dollars, I think, is, never talked about four dollars so much in my life, but like, the four dollars is, it's making people pretty upset. Um, and it's making people who are coming here say they're never coming back, you know? And some of it is like, they're here, all right, we might as well just stay and like, see what the deal is. And they're like, and, and it's like usually like couples, you know, something like twelve dollars, it's twelve dollars, and the other person's like, oh, like, you know, let's see, let's see what it is, but they're kind of stressed out already, right? They're already like, waiting, they're like, waiting to leave, they're looking at the parking enforcement officers sort of surfing around. They're not having a very good time on like a weekend where they're kind of meant to enjoy their visit here. Um, so the lowering the rate, I think, is also something that we wanna make. Um, can you just say, say one thing? The, yeah, 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 the four dollars.
If you have stuff written down, I'd love to have the additional.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just the idea of this four dollars sort of continuing into January, and I think through the rest of that, like, lower season is a little, it's really concerning, I think.
Thank you, Grace, yeah. Okay, now I'll remind everybody, three minutes a shot. Um, I think the name is Robert LeBlanc, one oh three Main, oh, I never knew that was your last name, hi.
Hi, hey, John. I wrote everything down so that I can get it within my three minutes, so I, I can't really react to anything that you guys said prior to, prior to me hearing that. So we'll just read this as quickly as I can. Hello, my name is Robert LeBlanc. I own and operate with my family the shops at one oh three Main Street in Cold Spring, New York. We are in our ninth year of operation and have grown to love Cold Spring and all of its charm. Visitors have consistently commented about the comforting and welcoming atmosphere the village has created. Local residents who repeats repeatedly visit the shops, residents that repeatedly visit the shops as we carry many of the products that, that have been requested by residents. We've seen toddlers grow into young adults, given treats to pets of residents and out-of-town visitors in hun- by the hundreds, and which has helped us create that atmosphere also. Unfortunately, if a visitor decides to drive into Cold Spring and wants to park on or near Main Street, parking spaces are far shorter than demand most of the time. We were very excited to hear about metered parking on Main Street as a possible cure to the lack of parking for visitors, local and distant. The revenue to the village to finance much-needed projects made it seem like a win-win. I'm sure the intentions of the trustees and others involved in the development and enacting part of the regulations and pricing could not envision the effects that, that, that will be, that have been created by it. The first weekend metered parking was enforced. Many of the visitors and residents had no awareness of the new regulations. Backed up by the, and now you backed that up by the fact that over a hundred people in a six-block area received a parking ticket, mostly because they did not realize that metered parking was in effect. I asked people when they entered my store if they parked on Main Street, and they were, if, if they were aware of the metered parking charges. Many that drove in did not know, and they left the store. When some came back, they commented about the difficult time they had, the excessive charges, and why were there all these tickets on cars? The visitors that stayed and paid the parking lost that welcome feeling that they had before. And the ones that received the seventy-five dollar ticket will probably never return again. With parking regulations as they stand presently, charging excessively high hourly charges, as expressed by the visitors, along with limiting visitors to three hours, not making paid parking charges more obvious as they did not see the signs, high fines on ticketing, by the end of this year, Cold Spring will be known as a tourist trap village. Please increase parking limits and awareness of parking charges, decrease hourly rates and fines, and help shopkeepers to be able to remain in business on Main Street. Cold Spring has been welcoming and comforting to its visitors for quite some time, and we continue to keep this as long as we can correct this hiccup quickly. Cold Spring shopkeepers are winter survivors and plan to be survivors again this winter. But without your help now, many of us may not survive. We can't experiment with shoppers' limits. They have many other options, and we don't. Please help us now, thank you.
Judy Naskin, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name well, are you Judy?
Yeah.
Yes, come on up, uh, ninety Main, yeah?
Right.
Okay, hi, how do you pronounce your name? Naskin, that was right, okay.
I have nothing to say today, but I do think that the fee, the four dollars an hour is very high for most people. And I don't even think that they do have a four-dollar meter in Manhattan. And, uh, to, to visit the village for twelve dollars for three hours seems very excessive. And if they do come and put the, the money in the meter, um, you know, they may not spend as much at a store, because they already are, you know, down twelve dollars. And as far as the amount of time on the meters, I think that's a little unfair too, because people come in, they wanna walk around, and they wanna get something to eat. Now, if you're dining at some of these places, you're gonna be quite a while. And if, if they're gonna be ticketed because they go over for dining, they're not gonna come to eat in these places. I think you're deterring people from coming to Cold Spring, and they'll go to Beacon. And I know Beacon obviously doesn't need the funds that we do, because it's a city and we're a village. But, you know, it is also walkable, and it's very lovely, and there's a lot of shops there. And you're kind of encouraging the people to go to Beacon instead of coming to Cold Spring. You know, I think that has to be in consideration, the price and the amount of time.
Thank you. I just wanna pause for a second and give a little bit of background, not, you, you can, be, be comfortable, please. Um, a little bit of background on how we arrived at the four dollars. Um, we know what, what comparables are in the region. We did look at comparables when we were setting rates. We were taking reg, the recommendation of the Parking Committee, which encouraged, encouraged us to incentivize parking off Main Street, parking in the municipal lot, and parking in the free lot, so we made the municipal lot cheaper. It could be that we've hit, we've gone too high, um, on the meter numbers, and we're willing to have that conversation. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Re- Rebecca, you're interrupting. The Parking Committee recommended a lower amount in the municipal lot to incentivize people to park farther, and a higher amount for people to park on Main Street, to try to push people that way. We may not have set the amount right, and we're open to the conversation, but that's how we got to where we got with the four dollars. So it wasn't, it wasn't pulled out of the blue without thought, that's how we got there. Um, okay, so we're, we've, go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, did the Parking Committee recommend four dollars?
No, they recommended, I think, some one, two, two fifty, and we took that number and then chose the higher number as trying to incentivize the meter lot.
We being the Village Board?
The Village Board, thank you. In, so that is over the last, oh, the last year, two years, um, of public meetings. Okay, I'm sorry, Rebecca, but if you, please don't interrupt, okay? Um, next is Brad Gilly, seventy-five Main.
Anything to say?
No, I'm sorry, you, Patrick, you're the next person, go ahead.
Hello, uh, my name's Brad Gilly. Um, I'm a new merchant, uh, inside of Ascend, uh, I own Citrine Cafe. Um, though I've not been in year, in business for a year, I'm just opening in August. Um, so I don't have, uh, data to support what I've noticed. Uh, I do have a lot of anecdotal data. From customers who come in, they've just been, yes, one, the, the thing that I get every day is confusion about the, you know, when is parking, you know, and people come in asking for help every single day, like, help them pay for, how to use the app or how to use the kiosk, and so, I think there's a lot of confusion. And the other thing that I, I see customers on a daily basis, more on the weekends, is the outrage in the price. It's just, I think everybody feels it's too high. And until just now, Mary Foley, I didn't realize that it was even cheaper to, to park at the municipal lot. So I think there is, obviously, I think that could be better communicated to, to people. So people could know that it's, it's less expensive to park off-site, off, off the Main Street. And the other thing is that I, I know there's, there are the free parking spots on the weekends, but my employees, when they come in on the weekends, they're not there to park. And so I've had one employee get a ticket because just couldn't find a spot to support the app.
Grabbing that, grabbing that to help your place, for sure.
Yeah, but the, I think the train station builds up and, yeah, so I think that will be helpful. But I, I just really, I urge you to consider some of the points that have to raise and to, to lengthen the amount of time that people can stay and lower the rate. And increase the sort of, you know, the, or divide, you know, our increments, yes. To make that a little bit easier for people to save for smaller amounts of time, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you for great coffee.
Yeah.
Kada, sixty Main. And just a quick reminder, everybody, so, so we're moving forward in the conversation because we do have folks online as well. If you can, we've, we've heard, we've heard consistent feedback on a couple of topics. If you could introduce new topics and not repeat what's come before, that would be, help us to keep the conversation going.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Kada, I'm the owner of Poor George, located at sixty Main Street. I'm also the co-chair with Grace of the Main Street Merchant Committee. To piggyback off of what Grace said, we just had one more point of a preference for more metered days. That was a very insightful look at the budget and something to offer up another stream of revenue and possibly opening up those days as well. But then I really wanted to go into the micro impact of my own business. I'm in my sixth year on Main Street here in Cold Spring. And my recent move to sixty Main Street is like starting a new business for me, but with the knowledge and experience of these past five years. I spent fifty thousand dollars of my own money on renovating my space and bringing it up to speed with knowledge, knowing that I make a steady of fifteen to twenty percent increase at year over year. So I'd say it was a pretty clear move and it was a well-educated move. So for my Q1 this year, I was up twenty-three percent. And Q4, so October to December, I was up sixty-nine percent. So that's really awesome. And in my history of being open seventy-three months in Cold Spring, I've only been down two, and one of which was this past April. Currently, I'm only up three percent for this past April and May, and this does not cover my new overhead. My rent has gone up two hundred and thirty-three percent by expanding my space, as well as my payroll has more than doubled. So just these fixed overhead costs of rent and payroll alone are taking up forty-one percent of my profits. That's before even the fifty percent that gets put back into inventory and supplies for the store versus in the past, it's been basically below twenty percent. I spoke really fast. So, thank you guys for all of your consideration. I appreciated the really open conversation and look forward to seeing the changes we can make.
I appreciate the insights, when, when you're describing business practices, I appreciate the insight you're offering.
Can I mention one other thing just on the other days? So we, I think the original, I can't remember, there were some iterations, but from the parking committee, it might have been all days residential parking and all days paid parking or something like that. But we got a lot of feedback from residents with concern about wanting, wanting to have more flexibility to be able to, for guests to come or for contractors and we, so we landed, I think that was the rationale, we landed on having just metered parking Friday, Saturday and Sunday on Main Street and then just residential parking Friday, Saturday, Sunday on the resident street. But they have to go together. So if we change anything about Main Street, we have to change the resident parking. And we've got a lot of feedback during the parking discussions from residents. And so I think, you know, and be glad to hear from residents too. It's been, I think, largely a success. And so just to say, they have to about like, any changes of days on Main Street would come with, would changes for resident parking and would bring, you know, another perspective into the question.
Yeah, I mean, there are very, there are very few elements of this program where if you tweak one thing, you're not changing others. So we have to be, we have to be mindful of what, what faucet we're turning and where that makes the water run. Also, some of the original thinking around the metering on the weekends and allowing unpaid space, spaces during the week was to give time during the week when residents could be on Main Street without a fee. So to try to balance off our busy time with the slower time on the weekend and incentivize residents to be on Main Street when Main Street's quiet or can be quiet. So, you know, there, there, there was logic to things and now we have to decide whether the logic worked or didn't work. Okay, so Craig was next, Grace is next.
Hi, I'm Jess.
I'm sorry, I say your name wrong every single time, like decade, a decade of hanging.
Wrong most days, that's why it's Smith everywhere I go.
Great, next, right, carry on.
And before I start, I want to say, I want to thank the trustees tremendously for your job, your effort, the time you put in, the amount of data that you must have to read and the amount of people you must have to listen to. So I applaud you for all of your work and your effort as none of this is easy and you're here spending your time with us. I'm gonna skip over some of the things I heard earlier and try to stick to some of the ones that seem to be more pressing. Trustee Erin, I think the one thing I'm gonna be quite blunt with you about, and I'm not gonna skip around, is that everything you spoke about missed the human element. All of your data, all of your facts, all of your spreadsheets, all that we talked about money. And what we're hearing is the discomfort, the anger, the people who are like, oh, I just got a seventy-five dollar ticket on my car, I'm no longer buying anything in your store, I'm leaving town. We have created a plan that was very much needed, but it is a very short-term going-to-be success. People are saying, we are not coming back, we will not return. This does not feel welcoming, this does not feel like the Cold Spring I know. So this may be a short-term win in a budget, but this is a long-term fall, for sure. I have already cut fifteen percent of my staff going forward for the summer. I did it today in my, thank you, Kada, in my forty quarters, forty. My ten years, this is the first time ever I missed two months in a row by over twenty thousand dollars. People come in and they are not comfortable, they're saying it, oh, twelve dollars, like what? And then I gotta go move my car? We were planning on staying the day, we were gonna go have lunch, or we were gonna go for a hike. They may visit my store, but they may cut Kada's store. They may go to Kada's store, but they may skip the wine shop, right? The three-hour window has got to really be reviewed because people will just leave and they will not spend the money that they planned in the whole village. And that trickle-down effect is, I've already laid off one employee. That's one employee who will not go to Doug's and have dinner. That's one employee who will not go to the cafe and get a coffee. That's one employee who will not go across the street and get a bottle of wine on the way home. The trickle-down effect is long-term here. This is a very short-term thing, and I understand you guys have budgets. You have extreme strengths that you must meet, but you've got to look at something longer. And if it's Fridays, if it's Thursdays, if it's a dollar every day, it's the three officers out there, maybe they write a ticket. The amount of U-turns I see in front of my store every single day is crazy.
Okay, let's not defend the opposite.
I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying, maybe there's another way that we can also find revenue from tickets. I also know that on Fridays, I park in resident parking because I can't find a spot. And I'm not going to the edge of the village when I need to be in front of my store because I know I'm not gonna get a ticket because there's nobody writing. And I'm just being honest, the sign says resident parking, but there's nobody enforcing it. I feel like I had to be honest and I have to tell you that.
That's fine, you, you should, just so you know, the, the enforcement of the summer job, it's hard to hire people to do parking enforcement during the summer. So it will increase, we will hire, we hire students, they are law enforcement students when they're out of school, which is happening shortly, there will be more of that enforcement. We've got constraints, we work with two from a staffing perspective.
Yeah, I'm just saying, maybe look further out than just the day, the two days that people come here to spend their money and enjoy this village, maybe look further out than that.
Thank you, Beau. Beau, one forty-three Main.
Hi, thank you. All of you, for all your work. You're welcome. I can't remember your name, but, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
I have a floral store, I believe that everyone loves flowers or less and need flowers for many occasions. I support, open my business for the locals. I have locals coming in and are devastated that they have to pay four dollars an hour on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays. My business is only open Friday, Saturday and Wednesday afternoons. I will open on Sundays, it is worth, worth it, depending on the seasons. I'm busy over the holidays, but people are, have, many customers have come to me and said, I'm not coming to buy flowers here at park because of the parking. I refuse to pay money on Fridays. I don't know if there's a solution to actually have locals coming in to, and change the hours maybe on Fridays, so locals can come in between, I mean, that, the meter parking will start at one, maybe one o'clock or something, I don't know, it's a suggestion. But I just feel like my business supports locals and I am going downhill with no locals coming in. I mean, I have a few working, but when, we're talking about Garrison, we're talking about Beacon. And I've had my business for seven years and it's really not easy. Another thing I, which is besides the point, but I see so many people speeding up and down Main Street. And I think speeding ticket is something that should actually be addressed more. And that's it, thank you.
Judy Anne Romanello, one oh nine Main.
Hi.
Hi. I'm, I'm gonna read something off my phone, but I think I'll just talk. So I've been here four years in Cold Spring. I've endured a pandemic before I was even open, which, yeah, I survived. Just in the past four years, these past two months, I have seen a significant decline in my business. I was down thirty-five percent for the month of April and twenty-five percent for the month of May. I own a vintage store, and if you've been in any vintage store, it is a sifting and digging and you have to treasure hunt in a vintage store. It takes time to look through the clothes. And I'm finding that customers are running out of bidding rooms because they have to go run to their cars. So I'm finding that the three-hour minimum, or maximum, it's just not enough time for, for what I do and what I offer in my store. Unfortunately, I can't just have them grab a size small, you have to go through and look at the measurements. And I've just seen the significant decline, so.
Thank you very much. Dave Marzolo, seventy-five Main Streets.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, I just want to start off by saying that I love you guys. You guys, two of you do a great job. Mary Foley, I think you're fantastic. Trustee Starbuck, I know you worked a lot on this, I know how hard it was on you, I think you're doing a great job. Tweeps, you're awesome, Lori, you're great, Brian Mark, you're all right too. You know, I'm not gonna talk about the money and the money being lost by the businesses and how much the parking is. To me, I want to talk about something that nobody's talking about, and that is the residence spots, okay? So when you guys, you decided that you wanted to charge on Main Street and you said, in order to do that, we have to protect the regular parkers. And I get that, that makes a lot of sense. But the regular parkers is not just the residents, it's also the businesses. The businesses need those spots desperately. Business, building owners who pay taxes, that giant piece of the pie, those guys need spaces. Business owners, they're there ten, twelve hours a day, they can't park in a three-hour spot. And, and employees, employees are working hourly, they can't, they can't, you know, park in a three-hour paid parking spot on Main Street. And then I read on Facebook from my friends, a lot of my friends who are in these residential spots, they love it. And you said it was a huge success, the residents love it, and of course they love it. You totally privatized their streets on the busiest days, how could they not love it? I asked my friend, I said, well, what do you do when your guests come? And they said, well, you know, there's always parking now on my street, so I just pull our two cars out of our driveway and the guests park in my driveway because we have resident parking spots. But eighty spots is not enough for the businesses on Main Street. It's not nearly enough, you go to Doug's, there's thirty people in there. You're supposed to have eighty spots for all these businesses on Main Street. And then I read on Facebook, people say, well, you know, you could park in the municipal lot or they could park there at the train station or the green. And I said, oh, okay, so the residents, the residents get private streets and anyone involved in commerce is out in the green, they're out, out by River View, they're at the train station. But we are part of this community too, we are regular parkers and we need access to those spots. I drive by them every day, when, when, when my wife's in the garage and I can't get in there and I go down Rock Street and I park all the way down by the matter, by the battery plant. I'm, I'm driving past empty spots that are waiting for someone who has a driveway, who has a resident parking, parking sticker, you know, it's like, I, 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 obviously, three minutes is not a lot of time, but we're one community. Like the workers, the residents, the people, you guys have privatized these streets right in the center of town and you have privatized them only for the residents. But the workers are regular parkers too, the building owners are regular parkers too, and the customers, there's not enough, eighty spots is not enough for, for just the people in this room's customers. So then those people have nowhere to park, a, and, you know, it's like, I, I just don't understand how one group, these residents on this street, get their own private personal street and the businesses who I think are a big part of this town only get this tiny piece of pink for three hours and otherwise we're subject to the green. Like, nobody wants to be out there, the, the people who live on the resident streets, obviously, they don't want to be out there too. There has to be a way for, you know, the people in the town and for the workers and the people in Nelsonville and the people that don't live on just those residential streets to have access to the residential parking, or I don't think there should be residential parking, it's all just. Thank you.
Okay. Michael Hardman. Michael comes to us as both a resident and a business owner.
So, my name's Michael Hardman, I own Cold Starts on sixty-four Main Street. I've lived in Cold Spring for twelve years and have been in business for two. My business is really new and it moved for a year, so I don't have a whole lot of data, but I have seen some changes. Just want to reiterate what Craig was saying about the emotional response. A lot of the customers who come into my shop do have this moment of, I'm already out some cash, plus the tolls for me to leave New York City, get here. I'm feeling a little bit like, maybe I'm just gonna walk around the shop and I'll walk out. That part, I've noticed it happened and it, it's a bit of a bummer. On the other side, people are like, I parked and I found parking and that feels like a different thing here in Cold Spring. So, you know, I've seen Paul Snag and I've written you all a letter, you've gotten to, well, believe with that. But I am gonna discuss the sort of like eye roll part, which is bikes. Cold Spring, love it or hate it, has been a biker town for the longest time. They are here in droves and droves all summer, buying coffee after coffee after coffee and something to eat. A vehicle that takes up one-fourth to one-fifth the space, a Ford F-150 truck pays the exact same amount as that F-150 truck. The congestion parking in New York City, which just has gone into play in June, they instituted a one-half rate for motorcyclists. Most bridge crossings in New York and New Jersey are a one-half rate, including tolls, for two-wheel vehicles. I think that it's something that should be considered for the town, considering the sheer volume of two-wheeled motorists who come here and call this place their destination when they leave New York City. This is the place they want to ride in their mountain in the Catskills and they land here to have lunch and breakfast and like. It's very easy for a mobile purchasing force like that to decide to pick a different town if this place doesn't welcome them. There's one other way that can be done, is there weird, strange real estate on the streets that can't sustain a full-size vehicle? that can't sustain a full-size vehicle but could potentially be dedicated to motorcycles? Um, I walked the streets myself and tagged a few spots here and there, including a couple of little weird divots inside the residential area that's too small for uh a full-size vehicle but does not block the driveway. So I think, again, I'm volunteering to do some of that work, to try and find and help designate where those things may be. But I think there are, I think that would go a long way to say, hey, you, like, there's actually a place for you here because the town thought about it. It's here or it's there. So, thank you and thank you for the work.
And can I say, I think that board members would be happy to have.
Something like that?
That, that's something that you wanna do and help us document? Fantastic. When, before we started, you and I had this discussion before we started. About motorcycles and um there are certainly options that we can look at. We, we talked to you about, I mean, you can see how complicated it is to launch just in the first iteration. Some of this stuff gonna take us time and figuring out and also figuring out the capacity of the technology that we have to be more flexible. And we wanna make it as flexible as we can.
I agree with you. This is not the priority and should not be the priority, but I do not want it to fall away because it could easily just slip aside.
Thank you. Doug. Fifty-four main. Buckle up everybody.
Okay, how are you doing? Thanks, Dave, for mentioning my bar. Um, resident parking. Resident parking uh on the side streets of Friday, Saturday and Sunday is just way too much. There's have the, what's it called? Garden Street, Church Street, uh, High Street. They average about eighteen drive-boys each month. And on both sides of the street, with the exception of Garden, obviously, it's all resident parking. So there's no place to park there for, like you said, employees, uh, owners or even uh customers. The other thing is, is that the Main Street, you have open parking on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. I'm here, I live on Main Street. I walk up and down the street during those days and the same cars are in the same spot all day long. I can't open for lunch because I have, there's no, no one here for lunch because it's residents or maybe shop owners are parked there. And uh the signage for the meters has to be better. Because I get that all the time. I don't know how many people out in front of my place that park, they start walking away. I touch, I grab them, I say, look, you gotta pay for parking. They're not, they don't realize it. Signage has to be much better. And the other thing is too, is that if something has to be done, because if not, I'm not gonna last. It's not gonna work out. It's like, a lot of other people have said, this is a time for us to shine. And if we can't during these months, then why are we even here in January and February?
Thank you. So there are two names on this line. I'm not sure if one is Sammy and, and Lara or.
Uh, I'm Sammy Smith Coleman, uh co-owner of Understory Market. Um, thank you guys so much. I, I hear you and I know it's not an easy, uh, an easy thing to figure out. Um, I'm really just gonna echo all my fellow business owners. Um, I don't have anything new to add except that. Um, we did notice in April and May that our town, um, and we all know that weather is very important for shopping on Main Street and uh just the past few weekends, it was beautiful on a Saturday. I'm looking at towels and thinking, wow. Something's going on. So, anyway, um, that's all I have to say.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Before we switch to merchants who are joining us online, has every, anyone who has not had a chance to speak yet, a business owner first or a new, will do residents? Have you, have you spoken yet?
She was on the list. I was on the list, but okay. Okay. I wrote a little something. I'm Erin. Um, I own Reservoir at one oh one Main Street. Um, so I have been in business for twelve years and it's been three years here in Cold Spring. Similar to everybody else, I am been considerably down, actually thirty percent down for April and May. Um, my June is not looking a whole lot better. I will say it's for similar reasons to what Judy Ann mentioned. And that's just, my store is a store that people come in, they spend an hour looking around, they take their time. They try things on and they haven't had the opportunity to do that. They come in now, scan and run out the door. Um, I'm sure it's because they have brunch or anything else going on. They wanna take their hike. But it is concerning because in order to find something in my store, you do need to take the time and really enjoy your experience. Um, I'm glad you touched on Fridays because specifically Fridays have been the worst for us. Um, it's primarily evenings. I've actually asked my staff to send me photos of Main Street because I'm just so shocked about how few people walk in the door at that time. And after three P M, almost every time they've sent me a photo, it's been less than fifty percent full. So I don't know that it's actually about increasing intent, attendance. I think, again, it's about giving people longer hours but more, so I really think it's about the rate. One of my biggest concerns is that, well, let me say this. Also, I'm glad that you touched on return parkers and that ninety percent haven't returned after their first time parking here. Um, because I moved here again three years ago um because of Cold Spring's charm. And I thought it was a beautiful community with a very quaint but vibrant Main Street. Um, one of my biggest concerns is that it takes a long time to build that loyalty and what Cold Spring had created here. But it really takes moments to lose it. Once people have a bad taste in their mouth, that's it for them. They can find another village, they can find another place. They won't come back to someplace that leaves that kind of a taste in their mouth. And I do believe that's why you're only seeing people come here, park once, use the meters and not return in the last couple of months. I did wanna ask if, you know, due to the signage uh confusion, I'm still curious if anything was added to the Village uh website regarding not residential parking but actual the meter parking, because I haven't noticed that on the Village website. And I think that people use that as a resource. And I think since it is something that the Village implemented, that that is something that they should take responsibility for and offer that resource to the public. The last thing I wanted to say is that I employ for other individuals besides myself. Um, my business makes donations of over a thousand dollars a year. And that doesn't count my countless hours of volunteering for Cold Spring community reasons. I don't actually even live in Cold Spring, but I spend more time in this community than I do in my own. Um, so I believe that many of the business owners that are here with me do similarly. And I say this because I think our value to Main Street goes beyond just giving locals an opportunity to grab a coffee, find a book or give gifts to their loved ones. I believe the businesses are often the heart of this village. And I worry that more than bacon shops will be the result of this. Thank you.
Thank you. So have, have every merchant who is in the room's property owner. Okay, Malia? Okay, and then we'll, we'll shift to who's online. I'll just need to be able to see who's got a hand up online. If you are, we're gonna start with merchants and then we'll shift to others. If you are joining us online and you're a, a Village business owner and are interested in speaking, please raise your hand and we'll go that way. We're gonna do the, finish the room first. Hi.
Hi. So, uh, Malia Marzolo, seventy-five Main Street. Um, also want to just say thank you. It's a lot of work. I am pro parking meters. I've been pro for a very long time. I've worked in the Village twenty-two years. Twelve years at seventy-five main now. And um, I don't wanna repeat a lot of what's already been said. But I agree, timing is a big, big, really big deal. Um, we have three floors. You can shop, you can get coffee, you can see your therapist, you can take a class. You can see your physical therapist. There's a lot going on there. So to think of three hours doesn't really work, even just to come through a workshop. We employ over thirty people in our building alone on seventy-five Main Street. We have zero parking. So just to go back to that residential parking and that big piece of the pie, that fifty percent that comes from taxes, taxation, representation, I'm not seeing any balance in that myself on my little corner of the street. Um, and I'm just gonna come up with a question because everything else has been addressed by everybody um so eloquently already. Um, so Fair Street, no parking, zero. Just wondering, is that, what, what does that mean? And why is that?
Wait, it's a truck route.
Is it just that?
It's primarily that. Um, we have to have, you have to have a way to receive deliveries and we have no other streets that are capable of making a loop. Like, it's very difficult for trucks to get down on Main Street to get back out. Um, that is, that is a wrecked, a triangle out for buses and trucks. Um, but also the parking that happens on Sundays on Fair Street, because it narrows that heavily used street so much, it's a real problem um for the folks who live on that street.
They can't get out of the driveways because it's so narrow that they pull out and there's a car right there.
And the parking lot for the church is not enough for the.
That's a conversation that we need to have going forward.
Yeah. Just a question. Because we are a very small village and there's a lot of untaxed properties and, you know, uh, and a parking issue.
Yes, agreed.
Just throwing it out there.
Conversation.
So, um, yeah, I mean, because we do have a lot of old narrow streets. I mean, uh, Rock Street alone, right? One-way, tiny, narrow street with a really big curve are, um, you know, the, the fire department, if it wants to come down Rock Street, has to come from the other side. You know, there's lots of things that are, that are considered. So, um, the fact that we have just this one little, just on our road alone. I'm just talking from my, from my little area. One little part that's five-hour parking where people come and they park all day or overnight because it's not monitored. And then the rest of that entire road, that is um completely residential. That's our experience with thirty people working in one building.
So just a, another bit of feedback and information. New York State requires um that resident parking areas be twenty percent uh reserved for free public parking. We use the rate that the law sets. One of the things that we may be able to look at is, are we able to set different percentages? Um, uh, larger percentages as, as public parking. I don't know the answer to that. We were all, we're all hearing you and thinking of things in our heads to follow up on, but I, but I hear the idea.
Yeah, because there's lots of different things that we all view and experience. So that was just a question I had that I didn't know. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there business owners online? I can't see. I have my distance glasses tonight. Somebody help me.
No one has raised their hand.
Okay. So now we'll turn back to the room um and recognize any Village residents who wish to speak. Rebecca?
Uh, do I have to stand up now? I'm Rebecca Ramirez, thirteen Church Street. I wanna just start off by apologizing for interrupting you. Things get said and people believe them just because they're said. And I wanted to make sure that those online that are watching now and those that will be watching video at some later point kind of heard that to make sure that they checked the fact on that.
And we corrected it here at the table, the record.
Um, so, so I just looked it up. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew it was two fifty. But, but uh, relationships are very important and my relationship with you is very important. My mayor. Um, so I didn't wanna be disrespectful, but uh, but I just, that's why I, I did it in that moment.
Don't, don't worry. We've corrected it, the record. Carrie?
I wanted to thank everybody. I know that this parking is really hard. It touches everyone. And um, I do thank you for, for doing it and for putting it into effect when it had been something that everyone had been complaining for so long. Um, and all the committee members, the one that, that worked on it before, our committee worked on it. Um, you know, thank, I just wanna thank you for that. I wanted to ask if, so, so when, Erin, when you started the presentation, you said, you showed the repeated, the people that are not coming back. So that fact alone is, is very telling when you study parking. Um, so if there are empty spots, it always indicates that the price is too high. You should have two to three spots opening up all the time. So I was gonna say, I was gonna ask, I, I'm thinking of solutions and I, I wanted to ask if perhaps the trustees and the ma, and Mayor Foley could revisit the parking uh recommendations that were made. And I don't know how, I don't know if this is possible, but I'm wondering if, if there's an opportunity to try to pilot for a month. Just pilot a change. You don't have to promise anything, but you can say, we're gonna try something for this much time. And see what happens. Um, I actually think if you pilot a lower price, it doesn't have to be what we recommended of two fifty. But, but if you do, it has the potential to increase the turnover and to increase and get you to the numbers that you want for your budget. So I'm just throwing that out there to, to number one, revisit, revisit the recommendations that we made. And two, um, maybe trying a pilot. I don't know if that's possible. That's all.
Um, I just wanna make sure that, that I spoke clearly. Yes, your, your committee recommended two fifty. When your recommendations were handed on to the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees were the ones who determined to try to incentivize parking on in outer lots by making Main Street a little bit higher. So, we're clear with each other now. Don't worry. Okay, are there any other residents in the room that wish to make a comment? I'm sorry, you're, you, oh, you are a resident as well?
Yes.
And then we'll come to you, Dan. Are you speaking as a resident or a business owner?
Business or resident, either or. So, um. And both. Uh, I'm Eric Ramirez. Um, I have a shop at ninety-three Main Street. I live at uh Two Stone Street. Um, it's interesting because I have actually had a shop in town for thirty years. I've had several incarnations. I've had one up on Route Nine, on Stone Street, uh, what used to be the Cold Spring Cafe and now at ninety-three Main Street. My name is Ramirez. I'm not married, but I am married to one. Let's get that straight. So business, so I'm just, I'm going to echo the thing that everyone else has echoed, that in reality, business has been as slow as slow could possibly be. Um, I think one of the things we have to take into consideration also is that we're still coming off the tail ends of COVID. And for those of you who have, who've had their business during that time, realize that we're still trying to get back on our feet after that. The, um, I think also one of the things, I think the meter maids that are here, the guys, whatever you call them now, meter people, I think they're charming, they're very nice. However, uh, even though they're going to be future law enforcement, they're still very young. And I think they're overzealous in giving their tickets. Um, they keep running back and forth. I know that there's some people who have gone to the Pilates studio and have parked in front of the shop. I watched two incidents exactly. One of them, they came to the Pilates studio, parked in front of the shop and um had a seventy-five dollar ticket. So all the rest and relaxation that that person had went out the window. The other case was someone who shot, stopped in front of the shop. They went across the street to get a, a coffee. And the time that it got them to get the coffee, they had a seventy-five dollar ticket and the person claimed that it was the most expensive cup of coffee they ever had. So I think these are just um situations that are happening now. Uh, in my case, my rent is being raised. As everyone at my location, their raises, rent is being raised and the people are just not coming in. Um, I think all of us can, everybody has said it very eloquently, the amount of people that are coming to town has lessened more and more. Um, and they're just not coming in and buying. Just the fact that by the time they get out of their car, their car, they've already uh have spent already twelve dollars uh is a little bit over the top. I think that what I, in my personal view, what I would like the board to do is to please reconsider the amount that they have to pay out. My overall, the amount that uh, that they're paying, I think the four dollars is a little heavy-handed. I think during, thinking of the economy and everything that's going on in the world at this time, uh, I think it could be less. I was not, unfortunately, I did not attend the recent meeting, so I don't know where the committee stands as far as um payment for parking, but, um, you know, in my mind, I think it would be great to have parking throughout the whole week at a lesser price, so it would offset the weekend. Thank you.
Yeah, Valentine, Sixth Garden Street, and I'm deeply offended, Dave. I've known you my whole life, and you didn't call me, even ask me. I was on the parking committee as well. Um, for me, sticking points was really, uh, pre tourism. It was, nobody wanted to park at the train station, so they would park their car in front of my house from six AM until seven PM. And then weekends really kicked up. Hikers would leave their car, people would go to the airport and leave their car for two weeks in front of the house, and there's nothing we could do about it. So, uh, young kids, my neighbors have young kids. There may be some empty parking spaces in the, in the residential streets on the weekends, but that's kind of good for us, because when we go out with the kids or go shopping and we come home, there's actually a place that we could get near our house and load our groceries and bring the kids. So, I do, I do understand that. Uh, it's been tough. The whole thing with Main Street parking and metered was with the tourism, you can see, I have plenty of pictures. All the overflow and garbage cans, right? The extra flushes of the toilet down on Main Street, that's all funded really by the residents and taxes. Because who pays for garbage collection? Mostly taxes, right? There's no grant money anymore. We used to get money from the county. We don't get any money from the county for garbage collection. So, yeah, not, so it wasn't meant to hurt anybody. Heard a lot of really good suggestions. I, I, too, I think four dollars is a little, little high. Uh, it should be brought down. Um, and I think the hours, the point was more turnover for the businesses. Get people who are gonna go for a hike for seven, eight hours and leave their car in front of your business. Let them park somewhere else, so somebody is actually gonna shop or get to your store. But I think that's a good point. If you're here in a village and you want to shop and have lunch, you need a little more time, three hours. So, as a resident, I fully support that, because the revenue's gonna be there anyway, so why not let people park a little longer? But, um, all for the residential parking permit, hope it stays.
Thanks a lot, Dan. Okay, um, now we'll go online. Um, I see one hand, Maggie Valentine.
So, Maggie first.
I, I, that's all that I see raised right now, yeah?
Uh, there's one, one.
Well, let's take Maggie for now. Go ahead, Maggie.
Hi, um, so my husband just spoke, and I just wanted to add a couple of things, things in there that, that he didn't. Um, and that was, you know, I just wanted to thank the board for, for trying something new. You know, it, it takes a lot of time, a lot of resources, and whether or not it ends up being a big experiment, it's just, it was nice to see a little bit of change. Um, we don't have a driveway. We're one of a, you know, a small number of, of houses on Garden Street that doesn't have a driveway. So, this has been an absolute game changer for us. Um, I've lived here for sixteen years. My husband's lived here for his whole life, and, you know, we've really, it is rare on the weekends before this plan was put into place that we got a spot, not just even on Garden Street, but anywhere near our house. Um, that was back in the days when we had infant carriers, right, with our kids and, and carrying groceries. Um, and it's been a game changer these last couple of weeks. We spend a lot of time volunteering, coaching, um, whether down at Mayor's Park, where we can't park, right? We, we can't park as coaches to bring our stuff down. I volunteer. My team plays up at the Howl Dane Field up on the corner, and I have to drive up there with all the gear. Um, and we'll leave at, you know, nine in the morning, come back three hours later, and not, have not been able to find a, a place in the past. But to have that, have a spot, it's just, you know, it's just makes all the taxes that we pay, um, it makes it worth it. And, um, anyway, I just, I just wanted to add that part where, you know, we are volunteering our time here as residents. We, we pay taxes, and it's nice. I don't think it's privatization of the street. Um, I think it's giving people who don't have a driveway and who live on the street a little bit of a chance to, to leave their house on the weekend with their car, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Jesse?
Hey there, I'm Jesse St. Charles, uh, resident thirteen Fair Street, also, you know, the Chair of the Planning Board, but I'm speaking exclusively in the capacity of, of a citizen, uh, of, of Village of Cold Spring. So, uh, just some comments, um, and, and, and a, and a suggestion. Um, so the comments, um, uh, I, two, two big things attracted me to, to the Village of, uh, Cold Spring initially, uh, when, when we moved here a number of years ago. One was the, the, kind of, the, the presence of nature in the community, and the other was how proactively the village had protected the Main Street businesses and, and really encouraged uh, and, and fostered local business owners. And I wanted to be in a place that did that, and I, and I love that about the village. So, I, that's, that's one thing to say, and the, the other thing that just kind of note, just in observation of, of all the comments tonight, is, it's remarkable how aligned everyone is on the goals here. Like, I, I don't, I don't, it doesn't seem like there's much disagreement on what people think we need. We need money in order to, in order to run a, a, a healthy Main Street and a, and a healthy village for all the things that we're, we're encountering. We also need to protect businesses and, and encourage the volume of, 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 uh, customers coming through, and, um, I, that's, to me, that's really encouraging, because if you're aligned on the goals, then it's really just about continuing to, to collaborate on, okay, well, what are the things that are gonna get us closer to success on those things? So that, I, I really love that. And the last thing is, um, you know, I, I, I'm a data person at heart, it's my job. Um, I love seeing the numbers in Erin's presentation. I would encourage us, uh, the, the village to go, the board to go one step further and formalize the, like, basically align metrics to goals. So, like, if the goal is, you know, if we value turnover, we say, oh, the, the, we want villager, we want the village, um, businesses to experience more, more customers in some unit time, then that's a thing to track. We can track unique visitors per day on, on a, on a day-of-week basis, and, and to, to help make a judgment about whether any particular change that is made, uh, you know, we're experimenting with, actually has the intended effect. And similarly, if we value utilization, we want, like, okay, well, there's some carrying capacity of those air eighty spaces in terms of occupancy and revenue. Um, so not just the total dollar amount on a Friday, but like, what does that amount to in terms of what was possible on a Friday, given the hours that, that's available, and, and where does it also compare to the goals that we had of the seventy percent? So, um, just some suggestions, uh, that might help us take a step forward in pursuing those common goals. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Jeff. David?
Hi, yes, good evening. Um, wanna thank all of you for, for having this meeting and, and taking all the feedback. Um, I also live on Garden Street with, with the...
Sorry, David, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, David Newman, Four Garden Street. Live, live close to, to, to the Valentines. Um, I think the parking plan certainly has some work, right? I, just like everyone else, moved here, uh, seven years ago, love the community, the thriving Main Street, so um, I, more than anybody, want to see our businesses do well. I frequent the, the shops and, um, a lot of the business owners there know me. But to that point, I forget who, who said it, but someone did say, you know, our employees are coming in and parking for ten to twelve hours a day, and so I have a three-year-old, I have a one-year-old. Someone also said, nobody wants to park out on the fringes. Well, that's what I've been doing, carrying groceries, lugging my one-year-old, my three-year-old. So, like Maggie said, I'm so happy to be able to park somewhere close to my house, um, while still supporting all of the businesses, right? I, you know, I, again, I want them to thrive. I am for having a lower, um, you know, rate on Main Street, but uh, when it comes to parking and quality of life for, for residents, I think this has been, been great, especially as someone who doesn't have um, a, a driveway. Um, and then the other thing, too, that has, you know, disappeared are the folks who would commute and leave their car in front of our houses for, you know, two to three days a week or two weeks, so uh, really excited that that hasn't, um, that has sort of gone away with this, with this parking plan, so. Again, support all of our businesses. I want, you know, want it to, to work out, but also want, uh, you know, residents to be able to park somewhere close to their house, and not be on the fringes, like, like someone said. Thanks.
Thank you, David. And, um, to your comment and Dan's, just so you know, when we updated, uh, one-twenty-six, which is the vehicles and traffic law, we did include, um, language related to cars parked longer than, I can't remember if it's ten days or fourteen days, but now, now that's something that we can address under the code. Um, is there anyone else online who wishes to make a comment? That looks like Joanne. It's like, is it Joanne Flaherty?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. A couple of things. What about that on Campbell Street, the Battery Field?
The village does not own that. It's private property.
Oh, okay. I was wondering if it could be paved over and turned into a parking lot. Somehow.
It's an interesting idea, as a, as a planner. Joanne, I can tell you, the, the more you build, the more they come. Um, so, we're trying to discourage vehicular truck arrivals, right? And the more parking, you have the more cars that come.
Okay, so, well, I grew up here, you know, and I graduated from Howl Dane. And then I moved away. I lived in Brooklyn. I had cars in Brooklyn. Um, so I'm familiar with all the maneuvering of parking all over the place. Oh, and I live on, uh, White Hill Place, by the way. I didn't say that before. So, uh, I just recently started working in one of the stores on Main Street. And I have been observing, like, over the years, I can walk into town. It's not a problem. But there are a lot of people who have problems like walking long distances, even, I mean, what would be a long distance for an elderly person who has problems like walking from store to store would take them a very long time. And four dollars an hour is, I think is price gouging. And seventy-five-dollar fee is outrageous. And I think that really needs to be addressed, and I, I think it was addressed here. I mean, all the merchants are saying they're, they're losing money. And if you come into town to have like a twelve-dollar sandwich at a, a, a local store, a local, um, place, they're gonna have to raise their food prices. And it's, it's just, you know, it's gonna snowball into like, very quickly, people are not gonna come back. They're not gonna shop here. They're not gonna feel like, you know, I, I can leisurely go around town and, uh, and have lunch, have a cup of coffee, read the newspaper, go down to the river. It just, it, it's very detrimental. And I've seen a huge change in the town. Like I said, I grew up here, and it's really great, great to go into town, see Main Street thriving, because for many years it wasn't. And now we finally have all these brilliant shops that people come into town just to go to these shops. And one woman brought up a very good point. They'll go to Beacon. I mean, it's simple. And they used to have no parking in Peekskill. It didn't, I mean, it's much bigger. But, um, they have meters everywhere now. But it's not four dollars an hour.
Thanks, Joanne. We're at three minutes. Thank you very much for the comment. Much appreciated, and it's good to have long-term perspective in our conversation. Um, anyone else online? Can make a motion to put, close public comment then? Second, uh, favor? We have taken a lot of ideas tonight. Think that I need to sit with some things, sit with some ideas and, um, um, continue conversation. Does the board want to have any continued discussion tonight, or do you wanna, or do you wanna continue the conversation, whether you think? We do have some business items, and it is at eight forty-five. I'm, I'm open to either.
I would like to just make a comment. You know, there's a lot of ways that parking plan can be developed and designed, and, you know, in taking in everyone's feedback and talking to people over the past couple of months. I've been looking at all of the different models that are used in all the many places around New York State. Ours is kind of eccentric. There are others that are eccentric as well, but the most common model that's used everywhere is seven days a week and somewhere between fifty cents and two dollars. And, you know, w- we were given the, this, the recommendations from the Parking Committee to make it just weekends and have resident parking protected all week long. And we took that, and it evolved through our board process, through our revenue needs. And, um, maybe we didn't make the best choices, and we're just working on, like, what we had to go by, and the recommendations that were handed us. Making changes takes a really long time, um, which is scary when it's affecting your business. There are some changes that are easier to make than others, certainly. Um, our, our parking kiosks are really kind of archaic in terms of their flexibility and capabilities. Um, so that's one thing that's sort of uh, is complicating things. Um, signage, like, any changes would have to be re-signed. But I think that we're open to suggestions and ideas, and I don't think that anybody on this board wants to see, for instance, this turning into a tourist town where the locals stop coming, and the businesses all shift your behavior to only serve tourists. That would be bad for all of the residents and the businesses and the, the community. So, um, I really appreciate all of the feedback. We're gonna take this and, and think about it, and I'm looking at all these models in front of me. And I hope that will come up with some new ideas to sort of shift it and keep evolving it, so it works for everyone and doesn't harm anybody's business or their quality of life or any of that, because we really want everyone to benefit together. That's, that's what we want to do here.
So, you know, first, there was a little bit of confusion here. I was making a presentation. That's not my feeling, so. I'm not doing a job and presenting some facts. I have very strong feelings about this, so, but it didn't come out in the presentation. And they're reflected, I think, in a couple of different points that, that were made, that I didn't necessarily emphasize, and then a couple of pieces of data that we learned that we didn't present this time, because it's perhaps incorrect. One was, I also was very concerned about the one-time parker. That was extremely surprising to me. I do a lot of work with data, and that was not something I would expect to see ninety percent of people on my yearbook. And I think that's really, uh, very bad sign, things to come. Another piece is that we wanted to include tickets. It's all part of revenue. It's all part of the same thing. We couldn't include tickets because, in part, there are so many tickets that we haven't entered the policy system. And that's another bad sign. That's not the village that we want.
Erin, let's not remember to...
I'd like to continue, please.
Sorry, but make, please make sure that you point out that we are in the process of updating, bringing our court clerk online with the technology, but not simply that we have a pile. Go ahead.
Well, there, there are more tickets than there have ever been before, which is why we're not necessarily up to date. So, we're enforcing, but these are parking tickets. And maybe we're not meeting our meter goals. But the parking ticket should be more than making up for that. And also, I believe really strongly, our meter goals were set incorrectly. It's in a budget that I voted for, um, but it's with assumptions that, I think we're incorrect. So, the parking's full pretty much on Saturdays and Sundays. But again, I don't want to be a community where only those people have a park here. So, I think it's, it's gotta be something that is much more accessible to everybody, because it's a huge change. What, what we do in government really does have an effect on daily life. That's why I'm involved in government, because I think it can be really impactful, and I don't want to be outside of something that makes this super gentrified overnight, basically, from one decision. There's a lot more, but I save those for, uh, for another discussion. Uh, there's a lot more, but I save those for, uh, for another discussion.
Because I'm not like, I'm not here to kind of make a speech and that's not my, that's not my purpose. But I wanna thank you all for giving, um, feedback. I've, and I learned a lot about your businesses. And about how this has affected you. And I really, um, I take that really seriously. Um, uh, I, one thing that I've been concerned about, and so I'd be curious, you know, what you're thinking about in the future, but I feel like we, we haven't talked about. I guess you did a little bit, but about the off-season and Fridays and the off-season. And that's something where I think we could be even more off. In our, in our, um, rates. And, um, so, so that's been on my mind. Um. I, I think we're just in a really tough position that we have a budget that has budget goals. And, and to one, in one perspective, like, we have the same, if, if the customers aren't here. And paying the parking, then we're not gonna get the revenue that is in our budget. And, and, but, but also those, those. You know, the, the fees are really impacting you. But I'm just saying, like, I would like, when we have a discussion, it would be really helpful to hear from the accountant. Any other, you know, where, where can we move with this? I mean, I, I just don't know what our, I would like to be able to talk about both, like, what are the options? Other than just like a change the fee that you've been thinking about of kind of creative solutions? And can Michelle work any magic in our budget to, to find us a way through, given that we just adopted a budget? Because it's not that we don't wanna change something. It's just like, we have, you know, we have a budget that we just adopted. And so, um. And you make, when making a budget, it's an iterative process, right? So. If budget meetings are horrible to sit through, so, you know, as much as I love seeing you, I'm glad you weren't here, because it's boring as all get out to watch. Um, but the budget resulted from whittling down and whittling down and whittling down and whittling down because of revenue. But, but low revenue and rising expenses. So we are in that, in that way, we sh- we share that in common, right? Um. I think we made our best guess, knowing that we would potentially need to make changes. And, and if there's any resistance to doing that, we just have to find the change that's workable across the board. One thing I would like to see is having Michelle model different, different levels of rate change. What does that look like? Um. And also what I'm, what I'm also hoping, that we are early in the season. I'm hoping that we're, as the weather gets better. Right? We're, we're still in early June, first week of June. The ju- the spring is big over winter, but we also go into a really heavy summer and fall season. So I'm hoping that we're not, you're right, that this is, that we're gonna see people coming back. We're trying to balance all of the needs here with residents feeling absolutely besieged. Um, in the summers and residents feeling as if they're paying things on their own. So it's really hard to find the sweet spot. But I guess, I'm, I'm hoping you're getting a sense from all of us that we're gonna continue the conversation. We're not, it's nine o'clock. We're not gonna make decisions tonight about rate changes. We're not gonna make decisions about days of the week, et cetera. Um, because we're all pretty, so it is, we actually do really listen, um, when people are talking and it's work, um, in the brain. I would like to have a fresh conversation and model out, um. We're, we're willing to make this work for everybody, is your point.
Can I make one, just on, on, it would be great if we could schedule it sooner or later. I think that that's whatever all the, to see, but.
Like, I need to figure things out. I need time to, to do the analysis, but just.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we do have a, just everybody, everybody's applauding. We have a part-time accountant, right? I mean, she is, she works on other things too. So we need to fit this into her schedule. Next week is our monthly meeting. Um, I don't think we have a lot of other things on the agenda, but we can certainly have, if we're ready, if she's ready for us to, with numbers, we can have some discussion. After the regular monthly meeting.
Yeah.
Um, last week. We're not, we're not disappearing on you. We just need a little time to work on, to work on this and, and to work on that balance. You, you, you don't have to add anything.
Um, no, I will. Um, I liked Laura's point. Um, I think there is, uh. Actual analysis that needs to be done to run those numbers. Um, I agree. I think we're, we are all open to figuring out. Some solutions. Um, I think we've heard some things that are things that perhaps we didn't consider that we should. Um, but I also wanna take this opportunity. This is not like, uh, like who gets more collapse or favoritism thing. This is like a policy discussion. You're trying to do the right thing for everyone. So I don't, I don't need applause. I just wanna do the work. But I appreciate the fact that you came here with some really good. Um, suggestions and we will take that into consideration and we will continue doing your work. But in the meantime, we are here every Wednesday. We have been having these conversations for a very long time. So it's great that you're all here today. Continue to show up so that we can hear your voices. Because Facebook is not the place. This is the place. This is where the work gets done. That's all.
Go ahead.
That's true. And also, please, we, we've, we've created a, an inbox, um, for you to share with residents. We know you're, I mean, sorry, with customers. We know you're hearing complaints, sending them to Facebook. Um, I, I don't monitor Facebook. I'm not going to. It's not, it's not a public, this is the public forum. Um, so if people want to get messages to us, they can use the parking address or they can show up here on Wednesday nights.
Send a letter.
Which, one thing I noticed, there's actually an error. It's the wrong email address. Not the one we tell you to use.
We'll fix it. The other thing, someone raised a point about the website. I can't remember who that was, but, okay. So, um, our website's terrible, like, super.
Can you put the residential parking up, right?
So what, we are in the process of, we have, now we have Greg.
Right.
Who has a, uh, uh, who has a lot of tech savvy. And we have not invested in the website because we, I don't know how to explain, did my best to explain it. The, the platform, maybe you wanna explain it, is no longer being supported, so we need to upgrade. So we have an opportunity now to make a much more friendly, user-friendly website. That has a landing page like Hastings, like Irvington, that says, do you wanna visit Cold Spring? Here's what you need to know. Here's the bus route. Here's the free parking. Here's that, like, all the things that, that people look for when they go to a website. And for people who live here, you know, like roadmaps, what do I need to do to get a permit? Well, you start here and then you go here and then you go here. We have a lot of, we can do a lot more in terms of communications and we know we need to. And we, this is another place we need partnership. We need all of you pushing out messages as well on your, on your media and your windows.
Can I say one quick thing about that? That is one of the things that, uh, Eliza had brought around the posters and they did, you, you know. The village did ask us to post those in our window, but I feel like often. The businesses are asked to get these messages out that actually start from village dis- for decisions. And it is very difficult to post something on your door that asks somebody to pay twelve dollars and forty-five cents. Before they walk through your shop or your, you know, deli or whatever. And ask them, before you come into my store to potentially spend money, please turn around and spend somewhat lofty. You know, parking goals. I don't think any of us, like, you know. Worry so much about having the parking meters, but it is expensive for people. And that message shouldn't have to come from us. It really should have to come from the village. If you're making those decisions, I'm not sure that there was a business represented besides, you know, maybe trustee Starbuck. Who's coming from a different scenario when you were making these decisions, if anybody was, you know, on that, uh, committee.
They were all public meetings.
Respectfully, they were all public meetings and no one came. So, I mean, there, there's, part of this is participating. And we had public hearings and public meetings. And I very much appreciate you hanging the sign. I appreciate your perspective. But also, it is a partnership. If someone has missed the sign on Main Street, can they see it in your window? So some element of this is working together. We know we have work to do on our communications and we need your help. It's not a but.
Of course. And I think we have been communicating, but I do think, again, it, you know, it should start with the village.
Got it. Okay, we actually have other business tonight and we're at nine o'clock, so I'm, I'm not gonna take another comment tonight. Thank you very much for coming. Um, and we're gonna move on to the rest of our agenda. Thank you so much. Yes, you're welcome to stay, but it's not that exciting. Okay, board business, resolution seventeen twenty-two-four, authorizing the mayor to execute. Please take your conversations to the hall to authorize execute fire protection agreement for twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five with Nelsonville. This is our standard yearly review of Nelsonville. Please take your conversations to the hallway, please. We are still in session, Bob. We're still in session, Bob. Thanks. Uh, do you want someone to read it? You don't need to read the whole agreement. It's a resolution. I'm trying to find it through.
Resolution seventeen twenty-two-four, authorizing the mayor to execute fire protection service agreement with Nelsonville. The following resolution was offered by trustee Starbuck for adoption and sent in by trustee. Bosie to wit, whereas the village of Nelsonville does.
Pause for a second. Can you please take the conversation outside, please? Thanks. It's just, it's hard for us to hear. Okay, go ahead.
The village, whereas the village of Nelsonville did not have a local fire department to provide fire protection services to its residents. And whereas Nelsonville wishes to contract with Cold Spring and the Fire Company Number One for fire protection services to Nelsonville. And whereas Cold Spring and the Fire Company Number One are willing to provide fire protection services to Nelsonville. Under the terms and conditions set forth on the attached agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring authorizes the mayor to execute the attached agreement. On this call vote.
Trustee Starbuck, excuse me. Trustee Starbuck.
Aye.
Chelsea Woods.
Aye.
Trustee Bosie.
Aye.
Trustee Perman.
Aye.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, the next is, um, an interview for the intermunicipal agreement with Phillips Town for food scraps collection. It's, it's very much like our other. Mutually, it's strange, but. Phillips Town, any discussion?
So, you know, I, what I need is a resolution. I mean, I need a motion to authorize me signing to enter into the agreement. It would have been so much easier if we didn't need to do this. Um, but that's, uh, I make a motion to, uh, for the mayor to sign the intermunicipal, you know, Phillips Town for the food scraps collection.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, next, the generator at the fire company puked. Um, not completely, but it needs repair. Um, yeah, the cost of the repair is, uh, mu- much, much less than replacing the, um. Replacing the generator itself. We did look into that possibility first. Um, so, uh, we need to approve the quote for the repairs. Any discussion? Okay, um, I'll make a motion to accept the GenTech, uh, bid for repair of the generator at the firehouse. Oh, yeah, authorizing me sign it. So, sorry, someone else needs to move it.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to approve, to sign the quote for GenTech Limited for the repairs. To the equipment, the fire department, to the total of three thousand eight hundred eighty, uh, forty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Um, next, um, we, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Jeff Phillips from the Roadways and Facilities Crew. He had headed for the town.
Can I, um, just call out something in his resignation letter? He said, I do have staffing problems when I apply, but not possibly imagine it was to this extent. So, so context for that is that we have three people, four people. One is part-time. He was pulled into full-time employment for his other position for a period of fifteen. The second person, uh, the second full-time person is out of disability. He can't show his position, make his position open. He was, he had a work injury. So Jeff came in at a time when we were at lowest ebb of staffing. Um, it's, it's unfortunate. We've lost, we've lost a really fantastic guy. But, um, we weren't in a capacity, we weren't in a place to be able to hire other people at that time because of the circumstances of the other current.
Um, someone make a second? Now, with no joy, I realize. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next, thank goodness, um, another person we had interviewed earlier is available. So Bugsy has made a recommendation approving the hire of David Popobianco to fill Jeff's spot at a rate of twenty dollars an hour.
Shall we make a motion?
Um, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the last item, um, we, a, a quorum of the trustees interviewed two. Uh, candidates for police officer to replace, um, retiring officers last week. Um, I would like to make a motion to accept, uh, the officer in charge's recommendation to approve the hiring of Arthur Mendoza. And Daniel Baldonado as officers commensurate with the rates of the plus bargaining agreement.
Okay.
Favor?
Aye.
Minutes, three thirteen. Any comments on this? I had no, I had no comments. Okay, so make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of three thirteen twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and who has the bills?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the bills with batch seven four oh five for the amount of fifty-six thousand three hundred forty and twelve cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Epic signing.
Um, another board discussion? Or make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thanks for sticking it out without.